This is our reorganization meeting. And so then we just want to order the reorganization meeting. We want to acknowledge the new board members.
Stephanie Brady.
Melanie Balla. The rest of the four members that are still here. Okay, so the first individual action, we have to elect the officers. So there is the president, vice president, and treasurer. The first sort of business. So I've been entertaining motion for president. I'm actually going to make a motion to to elect Sandy Respotnik as president. You watch this for the street. Other than the other nominations. No, I'm hearing none. The nominations for the office of president are closed. All in favor of Sandy Respotnik for the office of president, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Yes, seven Sandy Respotnik is the president. Do I want or does she take? Okay. Moving ready. No, you see. Thank you, everybody. We will just to end this. So our next order of drinks is to nominate nomination for vice president. So if you're motion for vice president.
I move to nominate Ellen Avola for vice president.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, the nomination for the office of vice president. All those in favor of Ellen Avola for the office of vice president. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Which one is elected best?
Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion for class.
I would like to nominate Julie's lines.
Are there further nominations for the office clerk? Further nominations. All those in favor of Julie Funnish for the opposite clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Eyes have it. And Julie Funnish is here. I would entertain a motion for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Tina.
When it's been nominated, are there any further nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of.
So can you.
So can you. For the office of treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they know. Your eyes have it and Tina is trying to get out of this. Thank you for doing that too. That's another big job. Appreciate your willingness and stuff. I don't think that you're getting by with anything. We could look at committees tonight or we could think about committees. If you want to do that. We got next time. Our school improvement committee, long range planning committee, personnel committee, and policy committee. Are the meetings, the standing committees, correct? There's others. But those are the standing committees. Would you like to, you, one person, one person per meeting? Is that what is typical?
Long range, we sometimes have two, just as a one as a backup. And policy, we usually have two personally, we have two. So the big standard across was about two minutes. Ivy, your school improvement committee has two, two.
Two, everybody. Problem. Would you like to work on that right now or do you want to save that for me? Thoughts? Or do you want?
Just gonna do it now.
Okay, all right. School improvements, who's been on there before this?
That's me and Angie Basser.
Okay, would you like to continue?
I would. I think that's been really cool.
Okay. Anybody else, Stephanie, would you like to?
I would love to.
That worked, everybody? Long range planning, who's been on there now?
Has also been me.
Yeah. Personnel committee, who's been on that?
Julie and I. Say.
And policy committee.
It was me and Angie Basser.
I was on that.
Yep.
That worked for everybody? All right, well, that was easy. All right, let's call the regular board meeting to order. If you'd like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes. And it's their time alone and cannot pass that time on to someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom can all are welcome to join the public comment and just put your name in the chat if you would like to comment. So we'll start with people here. Is there someone who would like to speak? Okay, when you come up, would you please state your name and your connection to the school?
Dave Hobbick, City of Washburn resident. Ready?
Yeah.
As a reminder, people who speak at school board meetings are interested in proving their communities. My views are intended to highlight needed changes for our schools. The new normal for schools will become adhering to constitutional principles that made our country great. A government for the people, by the people, and one which enshrines our core beliefs. In regarding to swearing in of our boards, constitutional oath of office, all elected officials swear into office with the promise that they will support the constitution. That by supporting it, they will also ensure the upholding of civil rights for each of the citizens. In the past four years, this board has been governed by because we said so principle. But I would contend that we, the people, should not quietly sit in the face of this tyranny. But our school district has a document history of violating constitutional principles. Historically, our nation has removed electorate officials who have intentionally failed to support constitutional freedoms. But so far, our local electorate has failed to demand those resignations. The new board begins their term tonight, and I will support this new board unless they fail again in their support of the constitution. So hopefully, we can start tonight with a new slate. A new chance for the board to lead by holding their oath of office to be sacred. That is a tall challenge for anybody who is not morally strong in their convictions. I wish this board all the best in this regard. Today, I listened to parents who were upset that Washburn has been publicly promoting an intercollegiate queer prom. It seems obvious to me that this is not a proper separation of church and state. Transgenderism is at odds with the teachings of many Christian faiths. Should the Christian faith begin to promote their functions within WSD? This issue will become our board's first new opportunity to support the constitution and its separation of church and state. We are all very interested in the outcome. In other developments, yesterday, Dr. Anthony Fauci tried his best to deny his own involvement in the pandemic mandates and shutdowns. It's becoming common to hear of our officials say that they never supported the mandates. But as for me, I will continue to ask this board to inform the vaccinated public as to the risks that they live under. This board has the responsibility to inform the public. As a mandate and vaccine promoter, the WSD board assured should inform the parents about adverse reactions. Many problems are the direct result of our previous boards neglecting simple constitutional principles. The pan, okay, just one sense, pandemic has left behind kids and teachers who live under increased health risks. This should be the number one priority for the board.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to go to the board?
Sam here. Charmaine Swan. I live in the town of Washburn and I've got two kids in the district. I was, and I know you can't answer me, but maybe in the future or some sort of report on, I couldn't find the COVID transition committee anywhere on the website, and I was just curious what the status of that committee was. Um. I was also interested in ways that we can just better support mental health needs of our students and curious if in past, we've done any kind of student perception or student voice survey with feed and especially like a feedback loop for action and evaluation. Haven't attended every board meeting, but I don't feel like I've heard that discussed in the meetings that I've attended. So those were two points that I was hoping to have follow up on at a future meeting or have somebody follow up with me at. Thanks.
Anyone else here? Would like to go to the board?
Brandon Lindy, former candidate for school board. Congratulations to the newly elected members. I have a couple of requests also. Number one, same thing I say after every election, I hope that everyone here is curious and asks questions whenever they're presented with a policy or idea. Number two, the Department of Education has published a rule in the federal register proposing changes to the Title IX program specifically relating to sports. The comment period for that goes until May fifteenth, which I believe the next meeting is May twelfth. So I would ask that the board get together and review the changes and put out a public statement as to whether they support or oppose those changes. For those who don't know, those changes are specifically related to transgender students and whether they should be participating in the sport related to their birth sex or their believed sex or whatever you want to call that. The simple fact is, we have many examples of how that will quickly destroy all women's sports records. Every, everyone up in the gym will fall if they're allowed to bring transgender students into female sports. Examples right off the top of my head are Will Thomas, a Pennsylvania swimmer who joined the women's team. You can find the video on the internet. He beat the other women swimmers by many laps. And I believe it was a thousand meter race. So I would ask that you guys review that and think carefully about it. Obviously, every, every board member at least appears to be a woman, so I imagine at some point you've, you've played sports in your high school careers or college or grade school. As a coach of younger kids that transition from fourth to fifth grade is definitely when you start seeing the boys surpassing the girls in physical string. And I believe that it is correct to segregate them to make it a fair competition and to allow girls fair opportunities for scholarships and sports participation. Thank you.
I'm Jewel Pickard in the city of Washburn. And I wanted to reiterate that I agree with what Brandon was saying. I also want to mention that when you have people who are not biologically of the same sex. For instance, if you have the women's restroom and you want a biological male who's saying they're a female in their bathroom, which I'm assuming if you have sports where the two are mixed, they're going to probably, you're probably going to want them in the same locker rooms and that sort of thing as well. I don't know if Washburn currently has individuals who identify as a different sex being able to go to the biological bathroom of the opposite sex. But I would be against that. In other words, a biological female should go to the biological females locker rooms and bathrooms. And the same for the men. The biological males go to the biological male bathroom and locker room. And I don't think that we should intermix the sports like Brandon was saying. And I also think we should keep the bathrooms according to the biological sex.
Hannah Lenny, former school board candidate. Congratulations to winners. Steph, it's nice to see you here. You can hopefully see all these school board meetings are running, what we do here. Um, so a couple of things that I'd like to touch on. The academic rigor of the summer school is again disappointing, especially with declining test scores. I would have thought that maybe you guys would have taken some input or some help to maybe do some things other than like activities and sports and stuff. Rather than, you know, it just seems like it's babysitter for sports. So as part of the school and as a tax and as a taxpayer, I would find it to be a priority to focus more on education versus sports. In the summer school, that it was really nice to hear you guys go through and pick your positions and everything. And I just want to bring to your attention too, you guys all agreed on everything and of course picking physical things is easy and all that. But I would like you to pay attention to like if one person says something and the rest of you agree, that isn't always the best case and it's not always the best thing for the school. So it would be nice to have some, it's great that you agree. But at the same time, having differences of that is something that we are totally missing out on here, especially in Washburn with this group of ladies. So today, we had an incident like where a teacher brought up the queer prom. Do you school resources when she shouldn't have done that? I believe you guys were all CC'd on the email plus it's probably a bit of a hoopla. So this particular teacher has not had any repercussions. Well, she might have, I guess that's private, but at the same time.
We'll have to stop now.
It's a public platform for free speech. So at this point, what I am saying about a person is acceptable. So as a foundation for a public meeting and for a federally funded school, when you allow free speech in this terms. I actually can, so you guys can look that up. You can provide me with that, but at this point you can't. So the teacher is Snap's dad. And regardless.
That's.
I know.
An email was sent out to the entire school. So at that point, what I would like to say is I would like to see some accountability for teachers who aren't.
Stop, now we've asked you to stop.
Sounds good, great. Hopefully, everybody are getting supportive.
Anyone else here would like to speak? Is there anyone on the chat that's? Nothing's in the chat. Last call for. Okay. On approval of financial reports and bills.
Okay, um, I'm asking to defer the March twenty twenty-three financial reports, but I would move to approve the February twenty twenty-three financial reports. I just want to give a quick summary. As always, my depth of understanding has increased with the presence of Janet and her, when I'm in the office reviewing these financial statements, asking questions and getting this deep understanding. It's clear that her dedication to the district and its staff and its students means is like when I wait as a first hand, it's just immense and sincere and just really pleased to be able to work with her and the district is likely pleased to have her on. So just wanted to say that, thank you. Also, the position gives me a little bit different perspective that I'd like to share with you guys tonight. So in this particular month of February, I was, in another month, I've seen it too, but I'm seeing the receiving end of the taxpayers' dollars. And to actually see that like come through and, and recognize the impact it has on the district. It's just a little bit different and I felt that that was a very nice privilege. So I just wanted to thank you for that and just wanted to share those thoughts. So I moved to approve the February financials.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Tina. Long range planning committee.
Okay, so long range planning committee, we've had, we had committee updates from the middle school and elementary school and high school. Um, we had a facility study presentation. It was supposed to be in this month of April and it's going to be a little bit more comprehensive. We just had a quick update of where they were and they're still gathering all of the information. So a comprehensive update is at the long range planning committee on May eighth. And then again, at the board meeting the next Thursday, which at the date.
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you. Um, and let's see, it's it's well organized. I don't know if you want to say anything else, Tom, about that presentation, but it's.
Yeah, I think that they're moving along in their timeline. Long range planning was anticipating numbers in March. They didn't have the numbers, I'm sorry, in April, didn't have the numbers yet. We're hoping to get them. I mean, for Monday. We're meeting with them tomorrow just to get an administrative update on. This is our expectation for the eighth and the eleventh to make sure that we have everything that we need so we can move forward. So, but yeah, they've done, they've been here, they've brought through the buildings, I've seen some preliminary sketches. Add-ons to Tina and post those as soon as they meet tomorrow. But we're really anticipating them. Should be coming next week.
And then we've had, along with the elementary and middle school and high school reports, we had the school improvement update. And we reviewed this communication plan, which is in the meeting packet tonight. Just trying to continually improve that understanding of the communication plan and incorporate as many voices in as we can. And then we reviewed just like summer projects and some other open discussions. So it was great. It's the meetings are getting long just because of the importance of living stake, but it's been, it's been good.
Thank you very much. In this way, reports, school improvement.
I think we start, we have operational goals and as those finalize and zipping those to the board, you have some from the elementary ELC. But an ongoing one, which is our main focus, major focus this year, is improving student achievement, academic achievement across all grade levels. So our team's been working hard, we've been getting some data, we shared some data last month about achieve. Sarah will come and present at some point. She's our achiever, but I'll turn it over to Ivy, who's the administrator in charge of that committee.
Yeah, so a lot of the times that we've given these updates, we've talked a lot about the, we call the plan to study act cycles or PDSing cycles. And it's really exciting that some of these shorter, smaller cycles are coming to a close and we're seeing growth there. But many of those cycles, just a reminder, ongoing. It's a, it's a marathon, not a sprint, and we're looking for school improvement, continuous school improvement that will extend into the summer, into next school year. And it's many years to come too. Two big things that have happened since we talked last would be, we had state testing. So we had the ACT in the beginning of March. Those are the pre ACT for ninth and tenth graders. And then we have the forward exam, which is for third through eighth, and it's also tenth grade social studies. And so one of the smaller cycles we have is just improving our test taking protocols, making sure students are comfortable typing, expressing their writing through the typing format and using those devices, understanding how questions are formulated and what are the questions actually asking us and able to really show their true knowledge of those tests. Of course, that's just one of the many cycles. Many of our cycles really focused truly on the learning process and improving the reading levels and the math, understanding of math. But it was nice to see those put into practice and that testing cycle is just coming to an end tomorrow is the close of, of the last one. And we're happy that they'll be done. We also did a third quarter star assessment. So star is our district assessment that we use. The hard thing about the state tests is most of that data we don't see until next fall. And then once we see that, then it impacts the school report cards, which we see a little later in the fall. And it's, it's a difficult cycle, but we use a district assessments data to give us immediate feedback. And we actually are using that data to then individualize student plans so that we can provide additional support in math and literacy for students right away. Something else that's helpful about the star assessment is that it's very closely reflects the forward assessment. And there's a new feature there that would actually project what your state or forward test scores will look like. And so based on those projections, we see a nice, some nice improvement. Of course, it isn't the hundred percent that we're looking for. So we do have a lot of work to do and we're going to keep working, but it is nice to see an increase, especially when you look from the students who are below basic to basic. The number below basic shrinks, and so that's good to see. There's also an increase in proficiency when you're looking at proficient to advance. So the number of students for advances is higher as well. And then we're doing some very specific plans in the fourth quarter, which won't show up on state test scores, but will impact students moving into next year. And we're already talking about what the startup next year looks like so that this work continues. And we're not just starting over, trying to reinvent the wheel each year, but that we're continuing this plan and going deeper into it each year. Another goal we had was growth and proficiency. We often see that growth from the fall to the winter. And just a reminder that proficiency doesn't mean, if there isn't growth and proficiency, it doesn't mean students aren't learning. They still are, but it means that we're almost like turning the tide so that more students are above at or above grade level than were previously, and they're making more than a year's worth of growth. And so our big goal was to make growth and proficiency from winter to spring. And we're starting to see that and that's very exciting. A lot of districts experience a static proficiency level from winter until the end of the year. And we saw that in several grade levels in each math and literacy. And so that's something exciting and that overall average score is increasing. And I think maybe just one more thing to update the board on is a new PDSA cycle that we'll start working on is math. We did do a demo for a new math resource for middle school and high school. It's very problem, problem based, so students are exploring and solving problems. It's very much rooted in our real world problems. It aligns perfectly with all of the math work that we've been doing at elementary when it comes to those foundational math skills, hands-on learning, extending the math block. And so it's really nice resource that we're excited to dig deeper into and that will definitely continue to impact growth in math moving forward.
Send around a thank you from elementary music. Appreciation of board for generous contributions for fun stuff that they're using and playing with. We signed a new memorandum of understanding with Northern Lights. We are, in fact, we're checking on the light, so in case something happens there. We have that ongoing agreement, so we'll get rid of that. We're meeting with Myron tomorrow to get some administrative input into the process where they are. Looking at posting some positions, I'm sure that the board some staffing updates that will be posting for, if not already, high school. We have individual shadowing in the building today for custodian. Just a reminder, paying for the board members' plan to attend the CISA Hayward meeting. We have two so far. If anybody could still make it, let me know. Get you on the list and then I'll let Dominic go. Working with season next week to, to reschedules due to weather days. For our shared service contracts, so looking at similar areas. We'll also be talking to CISA, T and more than likely posting. We've had some individuals already for us, their resumes, if they'd like to work in our district. Obviously, there's no replacement for Dave, but we do love that. So there is interest out there. I think summer school, I just want to mention that we have a nice combination of activities for kids to engage in as well as learning opportunities. And many of the classes that we have, standards are embedded in that, those learning environments for kids. We also have identified students who are in need of additional math and reading resources. 通过IEPs extended school year or regular red students, summer reading, summer math. Reading resources, via through IEP's extended school year or regular at students summer reading, summer of math will be. Uh, targeted for those who would benefit and also open to those who would like enrichment, so. Um, very universal approach to summer school as we always have had, but specific to some data for kids and reading and math. That may be something that will be not just confined to the six weeks, but throughout the entire summer, so that learning cap. Compelled to say that uh, we have great students, we are a public school. And we are here for all students, and we will protect all students and create learning environments and opportunities for all students. And then I would do whatever needed to protect our students from controversies. They need to be kids, we will allow them to be kids, we have great staff, we want to work with all kids and we will continue to support them.
Taking in your, your last few words and how, how true that is for everyone on this administrative team is. We are here for all kids all the time to protect them as much as possible, so I just want to. Iterate that again, um, coming from Dr. Wyder, so then I'll just jump into this. Uh, we have some really cool stuff that's been happening. Um, every month I ask staff to submit some really, really cool things that have been happening. Uh, so you can see that at the start of the, of the report that I submitted, it's also online. Um, just a quick update, I did get final numbers from Ms. Tesner from VAC, so she finally got her final numbers. So for VAC, we had seven first place scores. We had four second place scores and one honorable mention, so that is amazing work. Um, by our kids that went to VAC, there's pictures posted online and everything, so we can be able to get more stuff. It's the visual arts classic, so it's the little competition that they get to do, they start in, in, in area here, regional. And then depending on their scores, they get moved down to states, that state was at Madison. So we had some really good scores, there's some very, very talented students in our building, they're pretty amazing, so. Um, otherwise, it was the cupboard shelf. That went up to Northern Lights where they did their little thing up there, that was really cool. Um, Mr. Olson with his friends' kids, where they went to state. Um, silvers and golds across the board, so they did amazing as well. Um, and then Ms. Collins giving us her update on the fun um, inline skating unit that she did with some of the pictures and videos that she had sent me. Those were, those were really fun to watch. We are doing, uh, we are creating hopefully a new tradition in order to recognize. Seniors that will be going on to some sort of performative something. Post graduation, so there's out, there is a national signing day for students who get recruited for D one and B two schools. So they have a national signing day, and so if, when we have kids that do that, we have a day for them. But the kids who are going on to play a sport or some sort of performing art that is not recognized on that. National signing day, they don't often get the time to be recognized for the things that they're going to be doing outside at past college. So if they're going to go play D three volleyball or D, D four baseball or what, they don't get the chance to be recognized. So we are, Shandra and I have created a spring signing day. So if you didn't see this on Facebook, we're pretty excited about it. Uh, we sent it out to our seniors and it's for any senior who is moving off. For their performance art, whatever that is, in the post-secondary level. So if they're moving on for athletics, if they're moving on to be moving into acting or singing or band. Whatever that kind of per- performance is, if they're moving on to college for that, we're having just a little signing day where they can come in and they'll sign a paper. And I'll have little certificates for them and they get to bring people with them and they'll get to have. Um, treats and, you know, the pictures on the internet and all that fun stuff, some recognition that they wouldn't normally get. So we're hoping that this becomes a new tradition so that all kids are recognized on the things that they're moving on. Um, to besides just the big D one, D two schools. So everybody's in, if you would like to come, so that's on the third, next week on a Wednesday, starting at one forty-five. So if you would like to come, we will have balloons and treats. Come on and celebrate our kids doing great things. Um, the standardized testing Ivy touched on, so we did all kinds of standardized testing in the last couple of months. Um, all ran really smoothly, like super kudos to Jen Lots, to Andrew Grimm, to Trevor Wilk. Um, they all worked really, really hard to make sure that not only were our kids able to recognize types of questions. And know how they were supposed to read things, but that the environment that they were in was really conducive to, to strong. Testing skill, so it was very smoothly set up, the schedules were very clean, the organi- organization of the classrooms and how desks were set up. All of that was pristine snacks for the kids, so they could take a break and, and have something to refuel. Like it was beautifully set up, they did an amazing job, so kudos to them. That brings me to our, our building goals and the school improvement team, they are very much starting to schmell, which is one of my favorite words now. Um, into a kind of a one, one happening thing, so at the start of the year, one of our building goals was to begin looking at. Learning and implementing instructional practices, strong best practice instructional practices. And that is where our school improvement team has now begun leading our staff as well. So we did a few long extended staff meetings where we dug into four kind of major. Educational theories, so we looked at um, John Hattie's effect sizes, which talk about how much something that you do in. In the classroom, whether it be they're, they're just breathing or the things that teachers are actually doing and how much it affects their growth in the classroom. We talked about the gradual release responsibility, which is. Pretty much exactly what it sounds like as the teachers, we show them and then we work on slowly getting them down to that individual. I understand what I'm doing, I can comprehend and think deeply about the things that we're doing. We talked about universal design for learning, the best way I can describe that is when you think about how a building is made. It is designed for all people, it, it, it's not, oh, uh-oh, I have to put a ramp over here because we forgot about people that need to use wheelchairs. Or people on crutches, everything is designed with that in mind. We don't have to go back and redesign, so um, UDL is what it's called, that's what it's short to, is it's about designing learner experience. And how we do that for every kid, rather than just what do our lesson plans look like. So it's a bigger, broader concept of what is that we're doing, and then the last one that we talked about was Schlechte. Um, Philip Schlechte is the professor who organized and started this way many years ago. We talked about levels of engagement and what does each level look like. And and the understanding that just because kids are behaving in your classroom does not necessarily mean that they are fully engaged. And what's happening in classroom, so we're digging into some of these really big, big ideas. So we did some just learning, the next long staff meeting, they got into the groups of the one that really interested them. And they started talking with their, with their colleagues about how can I start building this into what I'm doing. And so it's a slow start and then next year, we're really going to dig into what do these practices look like? How do we start really digging in and making sure that they're happening and how do we start monitoring them? So they're just starting to learn some of these things. Um, and it's really exciting to see kind of the excitement that they had by being able to learn together and dig into some of these things that weren't for them. So that was really cool. Um, our master schedule is pretty much set. Uh, barring any changes that might have to happen staffing wise, changes of people leaving, coming, whatever that might look like, it's pretty much set, staff has seen it. Um, we have a schedule that has. The least amount of conflicts possible, that is the most balanced class size wise. Um, no schedule is ever going to be perfect, there's always conflicts, but. We're shooting for the one that works the best. Um, and then they, we went to that modified block, which we knew earlier. And so the staff has voted and it's looking right now like they want to have their two blocks to be a Wednesday, Thursday block. So that on Friday, they would be able to come back to all of their classes and be able to touch base with everybody before the weekend. That's what it's leaning towards. I'm finishing that up tomorrow to really kind of finalize what that's going to look like. And then professional development, we're going to get together here in a few weeks, I'm gonna, we're going to be sending out a survey to the staff to see. What kind of professional development they really would like to have for, for that after hours professional development. Do they want book studies, do they want sit and get kind of lecture for the hour, do they want to actually have workshop styles? What is it that they're looking for, so that when we get into the next year, we can have things on the agenda, on the calendar for them when they get here. And and then it'll be a much more fluid, much more functioning system. To, to reflect back how it used to be when it started before COVID hit, much more teacher-led, much more engagement. Um, rather than the kind of online, go watch a video and. Make some notes on it, so it'll be much more engaging next year, that is our hope. Graduation coming along beautifully, if I didn't have K. Hot Baker right now, I don't know what I would be doing in terms of graduation. She is leading me, helping me with everything, the senior class has got so many things, they're already like, we know where flower is, we know where. We know what our colors are, we know what our, our um, song's going to be, we know what our, our um, motto is going to be, which was really great. Because this year was actually a student came up with the motto, and it fits perfectly, but I'm going to have to have you wait until graduation so that you can find out what it is. You guys. Um, and the graduation speaker is Nancy, Rick, help me if I say it wrong, Wasnaski. Um, and in the report, you can see the write-up for her, so she is on the agenda today to be approved for the future figure, so. Uh, and then the last thing is accountability systems, kind of watching over the last eight months and seeing what's been happening and kind of where some of our. Stumbling blocks where our, Shannon and I have developed, developed kind of a system in terms of using passes for kids to get to and from classing. Classes to lessen some of the traffic that we're seeing, so we're kind of going back to a little bit of an old school system. We had e-hall pass, we are finding that that is not effective, teachers aren't using it. Um, kids aren't logging into it to get their passes going, like it's just not as effective as we were hoping it was going to be. So we're gonna, we're gonna kick it old school for a little while and try some just paper passes. It's much easier for them, staff and for myself and Shannon to see who has excuse to be in the hall, in the hallways and, and that kind of stuff. For us to be able to crack down, make sure kids are back, maybe along. Um, there's some other things that we have talked about in terms of. What comes to the office right away, what do teachers work with that, and at what point in time does it come to the office? Um, we'll be working on that on Tuesday, or Rick and I are kind of planning a staff meeting together a little bit to see how we work through some of that to get. Their input on where, where does that line for them in order for me to be able to support them even better moving forward. So lots of, uh, lots of things coming up, and I think it's going to turn out all really great.
Uh, the elementary, it's been busy this spring and it's going to get really busy coming up here the next month, um, especially with field trips. With so many wonderful local field trips, I'm kind of extending all of, up to Duluth, that local area. And just really some great learning opportunities, we're excited about that. Uh, we did celebrate Week of the Young Child, it happened in early April. And then we have our spring fest, annual spring fest is coming up, we're going to do planting underneath the solar panels, we're going to continue that process. Um, they also make smoothies and they ride little bicycles and mix up the smoothies, this is a super fun day, so, um, that's always a great time. Uh, we also have the PTO science night coming up, that's next Thursday, which is May fourth, May the fourth be with you. Science night, kind of Star Wars themed, PTO is really excited about it, they have a planetarium, uh, there's a costume contest. Um, actually, a lot of middle school, high school students are going to be leading activities, which is, I love when we can connect our older students with their younger students and continue that learning in that. Type of really fun environment. Um, let's see, we do, I had mentioned Teacher Ease as a, a possible resource for report cards. It'd be very similar report card to what the elementary is currently doing, but it would be actually hopefully more accessible for families, something you can just access online. Um, and referred to as often as needed and, and really hoping to cut down on the time it takes teachers to complete it. Just the printing and filling out process is really cumbersome right now, so it would be more similar to what the middle school, high school is doing. And but yes, to reflect the standards-based um, system that we're currently using. Um, just like Angie said, we're already looking at our schedule for next year, so we have that pretty much in place. Um, and it's looking very similar to this year, one big change would be four K, so we're moving forward with both a five-day-a-week option and a three-day-a-week option. We had the four K registration last night, it's like a nice turnout of students who are going to be joining our district. Um, at, at the event last night, it looked like a, a pretty even split, but we also know that many families who are in the ELC did not attend last night. Because they have those um, supports and services already provided, but will likely um, want the five-day option. So I'll keep the board posted on what those numbers look like, what the schedule looks like, um, but we're really excited about it. I know it will be a little bit of trial and error throughout the year, um, but families seem really excited about it too, and I think it'll be a nice addition for us. Um, you probably saw the updates for the Early Learning Center, but nice movement there with um, adding students off the waitlist and uh, some transitions for staff and students. And also the extension of program A and program B grants that we've received previously. So that will allow us, and, and addition of program C, so that will allow us to continue to purchase some items for the environment. And to keep that tuition cost low um, for longer than we had originally anticipated, which is great news for, for our families. Um, curriculum council, we are looking at, um, we are not going to use the BYOC or Embark resource that we used previously. Again, it's pretty cumbersome for families, it's not very accessible, and so instead, we're going to have a common format, um, actually probably four K through twelve. It's going to be very easy to read directly linked to the standard, so families can, students can see exactly what students are learning at what point throughout the year. And then also agreed on a similar format for teachers, but it goes much more in depth with depth of knowledge. Um, resources, examples and all kinds of links, so it's been some exciting work, a little bit slow, but I think it's going to really produce some nice results. Um, and I think the only other update I have is just on the building goals, um, it's great to see that sort of come full circle, just like Angie said. Um, when you start something new, like the school improvement work, it feels very isolated, it feels very separate. And then as it truly becomes embedded and graded, everything you do is when you really start to see the results. And then our building goals and our school improvement work have really meshed, just like professional development committee, curriculum council. And we're excited to take those building goals, celebrate the successes we've had, and then dig deeper and move forward with them next year.
I hesitate, but I'm going to say it. The survey for severe weather, winter weather, they'll go out now that we believe that we are. So we're going to put out surveys, we're starting talking about, uh, you know, we. Actually, the, the latest we did go was bank once, in this district, first of it. Um, so, but we want to get feedback from parents, uh, talking to staff, some preliminary things. You know, those two days that we always get those traditional hot chocolate, those sledding days. And then looking at maybe ma- max of virtual days, and then when do we then say? I mean, this was a, a, a different kind of a year, but maybe start having those discussions that if we get beyond four, get beyond five. We start talking about how do we make up time and day, so we're going to start those discussions. Uh, since this is prior to our next board meeting, art, artist reception, we're the art students down at the cultural center. Is on the ninth from five to seven, so make sure you can get down there, kids really appreciate saying people. And we are in discussions with uh, the county and St. Louis on additional space for ELC possibilities. So uh, we're looking at that, I know Ivy and Jamie, Matt, Mark and I have talked. For a while, St. Louis and I have been in discussions for a few years, so we're getting a little closer to what, what it may look like, what the county's role may be in terms of. The rental space, so don't hear whether more about that in the next couple of weeks. County is very interested in providing as many current staff they have and community members access to excellence. Young star. That was good, I usually say. To get them involved, and so they're very interested because there's such a great need, um, St. Louis has the space, so we're seeing.
Can I ask a question? We have the, um, we've talked about this on the long range planning and I think we've even had many, couple of students lined up, but um. Uh, but I'll just bring it up here, uh, is there any opportunity for students uh, to have a representative role in either a school board committee or at a school board meeting?
Structure is for long-range planning to have four students. So then we have parent, community administration, of course, that everybody there. Uh, and we've also in the past talked about students coming to school board meetings to give, uh, similar to what we get through the teachers on. Just a summary report through the student council, so. Uh, as we get, I don't want to say because we are, um, but beyond, you know, COVID. Uh, getting some of those advisory committees up and operational, kids more involved. Getting back to some of the things that we were doing three years ago, that is one. It ended, we, we had our final meeting, we came up with that final recommendation and then the board approved those last two policies. And that was the end of the COVID transition committee is, because everything then went into the two policies that we have for community.
Um, when, when you're looking at the virtual days, and I know that I have a little communication with you about that. Could we find out if, you know, I know that you said the attendance wasn't as. High on those virtual days, it's what a typical thing would be. Um, is it the same kids missing the virtual all the time, or is it?
We could probably, well, let's, let's get, I don't want to guess, let's get some data together for you and that'll be part of the survey, we'll get some information and we'll show you. Teacher input, utilization, how many kids participated, how many kids were engaged, you, you can't do, I mean.
I, I don't want you to guess, but that's one of the things that I was just. The same kids that are missing all the time.
You can be able to pull that.
Anything else for the administrative? Thank you for the good information.
To approve the consent agenda in March eight minutes.
You know, anybody? No, say no. Alright, motion carry. Um, this is probably.
April eighteen was the meeting. Uh, Mr. Madison talked about the compensation increases. Cease is going to wait to see what the districts are doing. Regarding the use of the C P I of eight percent. Cease is not planning to use the C P I rate and will have recommendations. Uh, May fourth is the school board retreat that will be held in Hayward. Um, as of now, about half our districts are registered. Um, then there was an oral report by, by Mary Major. She's the educational technology consultant. And she gave an update on gifted and talented programming. Um, writer's workshop. Uses of online book creation programs and student writing stories. And they can publish them through an online program. Cease will host one hundred to a hundred fifty students for this event. Um, Global X was another, um, thing she discussed. Uh, global citizenship activities of students, foreign exchange students will be presenting. Approximately sixty-five students from three districts are attending this event. She didn't say. Um, grant application has been submitted for next year and adding math explorers program for students who are in advanced math. Project-based activities toward solving real problems in math. Then other updates. Cease is looking into enterprise fleet management for vehicles as a saving, cost savings measure. Instead of only knowing vehicles going through enterprise fleet. Um, the annual convention is May thirtieth. Uh, we see, we receive thirteen out of seventeen district votes to approve the listing of the current C S A twelve building. If anybody's interested in buying a building. It's for sale. Um, any sale will require approval from the board of control.
The Washburn Education Council.
See the report, um. Circumstances didn't allow us to be with communication council yet. So I think it's just sent to a word that we're going to be talking about. Like that's coming up next week. We get more information from, probably by the, for the.
Alright, so now we're to the individual action agenda. Um, we're looking for a motion for each. Number one, call for both the chief three thousand.
In a second.
Is there any discussion on that? And so they talk about the effectiveness of the Chiefs three thousand.
Yeah, we've had a significant increase in reading level and all grades that are using it. We've been working closely with the, uh, Chief Three Thousand and, um, Sarah Cancela. To monitor that data. Um, it doesn't, it's a part of a comprehensive system, but the impacting reading level is huge. And we'll be operating it through the summer for students that can continue that growth.
Across the Grammy, nice growth, nice participation. Comprehension levels for the students who are participating at that seventy-five percent level have all gone up. So it's a nice, it's a tool. But it's a nice effective gear for kids and it's available to the kids in school, out of school, all summer weekends.
There's also a math component that we've begun using this year. Um, at the middle school, high school, they're starting to use this. We're, we're learning the program. It's newer from achieve. So they've, they're working out their kinks as well. Um, but we're, we're seeing that it is helping build some. Base level growth that kids have, need to have at the grade, at that grade level. Um, and the teachers are figuring out how do I use this within my classroom in order to support what we're doing? And how do we use it during middle schools for sure during their win time in order to boost? Maybe some gaps that they have as well. So we're starting to see some work there that's starting to show some real positive growth there as well.
Sarah is our liaison. Um, has presented at multiple committees in front of the staff with the staff showing how to use data. She's been invited to do a spotlight. Uh, probably in, so when we get the end of the year's information. Um, even though you've seen the reports with questions from Tina and others on long range planning, we need to bring her in so she can just take the board through. The depth, uh, that she's gone through with all of our teachers.
So all through this house, we're willing to use that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Space program Lexia.
That's the service for the base floor.
So. Second.
On favor.
Right.
With Jacob Derobeck and Bob Fendel as assistant baseball coaches.
I'll second.
On favor. Motion carry the integrated. Um, except the resignation of golf coach James Angus.
I'll make that motion. In a second.
Motion. David Lawson has middle school baseball pitch.
I'll say that.
On favor. We opposed. Motion carry.
Yeah.
Sir, I'm moving. Um, Nordsky team coach, uh, resignation for Nordsky team coach Beth Reed.
I'll make the motion. In a second.
Nina sent out a special thank you. Cyrus coach for over the years for kids of all ages. Um, I do harass her about the amount of snow. Wishing she starts in September and she, but she did officially end it. So just want to, uh, thank Beth for all of her time and energy with our children.
It's lucky she's been in that program the whole this year. We got rid of her earlier.
On favor. Opposed. Motion carrying.
Make that motion. I'll second.
And to approve the summer school.
I'm to approve the summer school.
In a second.
On favor.
They're still adjusting. So not adjusting any changes, but they're adding more classes. They're doing, uh, looking at a seat type in class. They're looking at some. Um, other classes that they might just add as they come in, in May.
I have a question about. The maternity leave, but maybe. Um, so Allison isn't going to start the school year, correct, four K? So there'd be already a long term, so. Knowledge of.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll post for that if, once it's approved, but I think that would have some great candidates.
And for those four K. Alright, um, we need a motion to, uh, we'll get to closed session.
I move the board convened into closed session for Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five one C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. The board may reconvene into open session and act on action items from closed session if deemed necessary and agree and continue with agenda items.
Second.
I second.
Thank you everyone for coming.